To order the meeting, the Doylestown Borough Council meeting for Monday, July 15th. Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America's thanks, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a few special presentations tonight, and Madam Mayor is making her way to the well First one is the Human Relations Commission Leadership Award given to Heidi Rue.
That recommendation is going to be made by Chris Kiansek to Heidi.
Hi, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
So on behalf of the Human Relations Commission, we'd like to present you with this award, which is the first award that the commission is awarding for persons in the community who've contributed in an outstanding way to promoting inclusion and welcoming society. So just a word about your organization, that I understand you've been operating since 2017, and that you help immigrants from a number of different nations, including Central and South America and Ukraine, to help them with whatever issues they might have coming into the country, language barriers, education, basic needs, and legal matters and things along that nature. So we appreciate the valuable work that you've done, and I'm proud to present you with this award.
Thank you so much for the Borough of Doylestown. I know that the immigrants in our community are a big part of the backbone of economic development here in the borough itself, and we at Immigrant Rights Action are really glad to connect them with legal services and other community services available. Thank you.
And now next, we have the Community and Government Affairs Committee's Youth Leadership Award. And for Riley Smith and his parents are going to accept the award this evening because Riley has already started school. So we have, the borough has an award, but Senator Sanosero's office is here with citations. Shannon, and I'll let you go first.
Hi, congratulations. I am Shannon Sticker. I am from Senator Sanosero's office, but I am doing double duty tonight. I am also here representing Representative Brennan. So from Senator Sanosero's office, I have a certificate to commemorate this award. And from Representative Brennan, we have a State House Citation. So it highlights all of the important elements of why Riley won this award, and we're all just so grateful for the leadership and just the commitment to our community.
Thank you.
And from the borough, we have a plaque for Riley in recognition of Riley's positive impact on Doylestown Borough community through his leadership and service. And then finally, from the Pennsylvania Recreation and Parks Society, who is honoring Dave Berger. So Ken Lear, you'll do the honoring.
On behalf of the Pennsylvania Recreation and Parks Society, we would like to recognize Dave Berger with the Good Job Award. Have a little cheat sheet here to tell you about the award. The Good Job Award is presented by the Pennsylvania Recreation and Parks Society to an individual whose contributions through leadership, community outreach, facility management, maintenance, or program and event planning have directly influenced the health and vitality of their communities. The recipient is a full-time, part-time, or volunteer park and recreation practitioner who has shown outstanding dedication in the field and has directly impacted the local community. The recipient has demonstrated community leadership qualities, involvement in innovative park and recreation initiatives, contributions to improvements in the recreation and park system, and outstanding long-term impacts to the local community. He has been chosen from among professionals from across the state, so it is my honor to present the Good Job Award for 2024 to Dave Berger.
Congratulations.
So first, I want to thank PRPS for the award, and also Caitlin for nominating me for the award. And, you know, the last 30 years I've spent in municipal government, and, you know, it takes a big team of people to make it happen. So, you know, I want to thank everybody else who's been a part of this, making my job, you know, a great success over the years. So, thank you.
All right, moving on with our agenda, next is the approval of minutes from our June 17th council meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, I think, from Mr. Frederick. Any questions or comments from any members of council? Hearing none. Any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none. I'd like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Madam Mayor, do you have anything for us tonight?
Yes, I do. On June 26, Senator Casey's office came to visit the borough. The regional representative and Washington infrastructure specialist wanted to discuss issues important to us while on a tour of southeastern PA collar counties. They met for an hour with John, Phil, Jack, Caitlin, and myself. We mainly discussed PFAS and water infrastructure, and touched upon issues like solar power, electric vehicles, and affordable housing. We were able to discuss the financial implications of PFAS remediation and treatment, and help we could use in the oversight of the remediation efforts. Next, Jack, Caitlin, and I walked Doylestown Central Business District with the Casey team, Commissioner Marsaglia, and Representative Tim Brennan. The team was interested in how our businesses weathered COVID. The owner of Busy Bee, Narice Kendler, accompanied us and provided a hands-on description of the effects, as well as how the borough helped through efforts like outdoor dining. All in all, it was a valuable meeting, and the Casey team was able to inform us of government funding channels that had been discontinued but are now back in play. And to conclude my report, there's a reminder that the much anticipated Doylestown at Dusk Show is this Saturday, July 20, from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m., and the rain date is July 21st. And last but not least, the ribbon cutting for Target is at 5:00 p.m. tomorrow. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Public safety, Mr. Frederick, what do you have for us?
Yes, Mr. President, we have one for council tonight. We have consideration of ordinance number 2024-4, creating a handicap parking space at 443 Maple Avenue. Attached, please find ordinance number 2024-4, which creates a handicap parking space at 443 Maple Avenue. The following Public Safety Committee recommendation, council authorized drafting an advertisement of this ordinance at their meeting on June 17, 2024. The ordinance has been properly advertised, and the Public Safety Committee recommends that council adopt ordinance number 2024-4. If council wishes to follow recommendation, it can do so by motion and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion. We had a second by, I believe, Mr. Brown. Any questions or comments from any members of council? Hearing none. Any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none. I'd like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
One other thing is the Doylestown Fire Company report. Everyone has that in their packet, and that is the end of my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Frederick. Moving on, Mr. Brown, Public Works and Administration.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We did meet this month, and we have two items of business. The first one is the 2425 Fuel Bid. Bids were publicly opened and read on June 14, 2024, by the Bucks County Consortium for the purchase of fuel for the 2024-2025 season. The borough uses about 25,000 gallons of unleaded, including the CB Regional Police Department, and approximately 8,000 gallons of diesel. The low bidder for the majority of fuel used, which is unleaded, was Riggins at a net spot price of $2.39 per gallon floating mean plus modifier. The bids are as follows: unleaded Riggins for the purchase of approximately 25,000 gallons of delivered unleaded regular gasoline at a floating price as of the delivery date, based on the OPUS Philadelphia Mean Price, $2.39 as of 6/13/24, plus a modifier of .17.9 cents per gallon for the period of August 1, 2024 to July 31, 2025. For Diesel, for the Riggins Incorporated, for the purchase of approximately 8,000 gallons of delivered ultra-low sulfur diesel at a floating price as of the delivery date, based on the OPUS Philadelphia Mean Price, which was $2.36 as of June 13, 2024, plus a modifier of .31.9 cents per gallon for the period of August 1, 2023 to July 31, 2024. The Public Works Committee reviewed the bids and recommended council make a motion to award to Riggins Incorporated, condition upon receipt of a properly executed performance bond and compliance with the bid specifications. If council wishes to follow the recommendation, it may do so motion, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, I believe, by Ms. Popkin. Any questions or comments from any members of council?
Yeah, Mr. President, I have a question. Mr. Brown, in the Diesel bid, it states August 1, 2023 to July 31, 2025. Is that incorrect? Is it supposed to be 24 to 25?
24 to 25.
I believe that's a typo.
Yeah, it's a typo.
It's typographical error, so it should, so it...
Should say 2024 to 25.
Should say August 1, 2024 to July 31, 2025. Is that correct?
Yep.
All right, thank you very much.
Should be the same as the first unleaded.
Any other questions or comments from any members of council? Hearing none. Any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none. I'd like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item is the Font Hill MS4 Sediment Reduction Project easements. The attached easements in favor of the borough and granted by the Bucks County Historical Society are prerequisite detail required for the Font Hill Sediment Reduction Project. The easement document was drafted in collaboration between the borough solicitor and a BCHS lawyer. The Public Works Committee reviewed the proposed easement agreement, recommending that council authorize its execution, and may do so by motion and I so move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Popkin. Any questions or comments from any members of the council? Hearing none. Any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none. I'd like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And lastly, before I pass it over to Mr. Ellinger, I just wanted to also echo our sentiments of Dave Berger's award. Well deserved. So with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Ellinger. It's paving season.
It is indeed. We'll be paving West Court Street between Lafayette Memorial, Lafayette the full length, West Oakland between Clinton and Franklin, and Half Lane of Lincoln, starting next Monday, the 22nd. And then actually, before we meet again, we will be paving the next round of roads, which is actually East Court Street between Prod and Main, Lacy north to Church, and Broad Street out here between Union and Doyle. And that'll actually be the full 2024 paving round, significant batch of roads. The department's been busy with water repairs and water main breaks, supporting water main break repairs, including a fairly epic one out here at Atkinson at Broad last week, doing a lot of tree removals and park work, and supporting events, including the car show, which utilizes every single barricade we have. But, as Deadass used to say, it's cars in their natural habitat, which, enjoy that event.
Very good, thank you. That's all, Mr. President.
We should also note that East Court Street, I'm sorry, West Court Street between Main and Five Points is being restored this week by contractors on behalf of PICO. And then next week, at the long last, Pendot will be here, first thing Monday morning, pave at least two blocks of West State Street from Main Street to, again, to Five Points. It's a, it's been a long time coming. We've worked really hard. We want to thank Senator Sanosero, and in particular Representative Brennan, who's really held Pendot's feet to the fire, and just also let people know we're not satisfied. We're not stopping with those two blocks, we're all aware. There are lengthy sections of State Street, both east and west, that still need attention, and we'll keep working until all of State Street is done.
Thank you, John. That's a good public service announcement. They're going to close down State Street. Pendot does not necessarily work as flexibly as the Public Works Department does, and they just shut roads down when they work on them. So State Street will be shut down for three days, and it's going to have a significant impact. We have done significant outreach work with those businesses, giving them advance notice. Unfortunately, though, the two blocks they're doing, there are no driveways, per se, on it. So of all the streets that can afford to be closed, but we're milling that on Monday, paving it on Tuesday, and then doing the crack ceiling, and we're going to sneak in behind them and do all the line painting for the parking spots on Wednesday. So we're going to try to be as fast as possible on that and get that street back open. But it's Pendot, and we'll see how they do.
We should also note, on Thursday, we'll start bugging Pendot about the rest of State Street.
Why did we hesitate for three days, John?
We let them pave it.
That's all for Public Works, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Community and Government Affairs, Mr. Bell isn't here tonight. Mr. Brown, do you have anything for us?
We did not meet.
Okay, thank you. Zoning and planning, Ms. Jarrett isn't here, but Mr. LeRoon has volunteered to step in and give the report.
Thank you, Mr. President, yes. Ms. Jarrett asked me to fill in for her tonight on the zoning and planning committee meeting from this month, and there's two items for consideration of council. One is the consideration of ordinance 2024-5, and that's amending zoning regulations regarding conversions and non-conforming uses. The existing zoning ordinance permits the conversion of single-family detached dwellings to twins, duplex buildings, and multifamily low-rise buildings, and the conversion of twins and duplex buildings to multifamily low-rise buildings. This is currently permitted either outright or by special exception in all zoning districts except RC, RC1, and FC. Additionally, an existing provision permits non-conforming uses to change to any other non-conforming use by special exception, regardless of the underlying zoning. These unplanned changes can undermine the borough's land use planning. Attached, please find an ordinance eliminating Use 5 conversions and modifying the ordinance language to require a variance for changing a non-conforming use to a different non-conforming use. Both the Bucks County Planning Commission and the Borough Planning Commission have reviewed the proposed ordinance and recommend adoption. The zoning and planning committee is recommending that council adopt ordinance 2024-5. If council is in agreement, it may do so by motion and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion. We had a second by Mr. Kinney. Do we have any questions or comments from any members of council? Hearing none. Any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none. I'd like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And the next item, well, next item on the agenda, number two under zoning and planning, is the zoning hearing board report. We had five zoning hearing board reports to look at, and we discussed them, and we had no problems with any of those at the committee level. So I will move on to number three on our agenda under zoning and planning, HARB recommendations, certificates of appropriateness. And under that, as was in your packet, you saw that there were two sign applications. One was at 2 East Court Street, which is a sign. Arthur, Ms. Zackan applicant, HARB recommended that the application be approved for a certificate of appropriateness as submitted and presented. The second sign application was for 29 South Main Street. That sign, the applicant was Ahmed Shot, and HARB recommended that the application be approved for a certificate of appropriateness as submitted and presented. Then we had five building applications. The first one was at 100 South Main Street for windows, submitted by Michael Raphael Architect. Number two was 291 West Court Street for a roof project, submitted by Richard Brown Architect. Number three was at 299 Maple Avenue for windows, submitted by Richard Brown Architect. On this one, I'm going to read, read the whole thing there, because the HARB recommended that the amended application be approved for a certificate of appropriateness with the conditions that the south-facing second-level double window be changed to a single window with the same width as the double window above, and the second-level windows on the west elevation be shifted towards the inside corner, and the railing mimic the cutouts on the house. Number four is at 192 East State Street for a dormer project, again, Richard Architect, Richard Brown Architect. The HARB recommended that this be approved, and there were three bits of information here. The dormer shall be offset from the roof line by four feet on the western wall. The window shall be a single casement rather than a pair of windows. And number three, the shed dormer will not have a gable peak. And then the last one, number five, is 6-12 West State Street, a window project, Francisco Olercon applicant, and that was recommended for a certificate of appropriateness. So in the sum there, the zoning and planning committee recommends that council approve the applications in accordance with the HARB's recommendation. If the council wishes to follow the committee's recommendation, it can do so by motion and I so move.
Second.
We had a second by Ms. Popkin. Any questions or comments from any members of council? Hearing none. Any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none. I'd like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And then the last two things are in your packet, the code enforcement monthly report and the building inspection monthly report. And I'll just defer for a moment to Ms. Highland. Did I forget anything, Karen?
No, that covers everything.
Okay, thanks a lot. That's it, Mr. President, for zoning and planning.
Thank you, Mr. LeRoon.
You're welcome.
Ms. Wykoff isn't here tonight. I don't know if we have anything from Environment Rec.
They did not meet, so there is no...
There is no report, okay. Mr. LeRoon, you're up again. Order utility.
Okay, yes, thank you. We did meet this month, and we got our monthly operations report from our chief operator, Jerry Matozo, and things were relatively normal there. You know, even though we had the extended drought period there, we got through that with some saving, short but adequate rainstorms to keep us out of serious trouble with water shortage. We did ask the residents for voluntary water conservation measures, and that seemed to help fairly well. So we appreciate that, that participation and help from the residents. We also had water from Doylestown Town We also had water from Doylestown Township Municipal Authority through our interconnection with them, which helped us get through that, that low period of drought influenced pumping. And then the other thing was that Jeremy gave us a report on the Maplewood Tank Project, and that is going very well, given the weather conditions. The weather is a little bit of a factor with all the heat and everything, but Jeremy, at the time of our meeting last week, said that they were still shooting for completion of the project by the end of July. Is that still...
Still is.
...staff has heard? Okay. And so that's, that's the end of my report. There's no actionable items. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. LeRone. Finance and Pension, Ms. Popkin, what do you have for us?
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance and Pension did not meet at this month, but in your packet is the finance report for the accounts payable, and I'll turn that over to Ms. Brinker.
Thank you, Ms. Popkin. Everyone's been provided a copy of the finance report for July 15. It includes prepaid bills, accounts payable, and payroll for the month of June. Total is $1,261,479.20.
And I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We had a second by Mr. Brown. Any questions or comments from any members of council? Hearing none. Any questions or comments from any members of public? Hearing none. I'd like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Ms. Popkin. Personnel did not meet, I have no report. Professional does report. Mr. Darty, do you have anything for us?
Thank you. I have nothing tonight.
Okay. Bucky, you have anything for us?
Thank you. No report this evening.
Chief, do you have anything for us?
No report tonight, thank you.
Thank you. I do have a statement I'd like to make tonight as part of the president's report. As elected representatives of our town, it's crucial for us to remember that our public comments and actions carry significant weight and reflect on the entire elected body. Each action we take, whether in public or private, and each statement we make, whether in meetings, interviews, or social media, shapes public perception and affects our collective credibility. With this in mind, I currently kindly urge everyone to be mindful of the impact of our actions and words. Let's strive to maintain professionalism, respect differing viewpoints, and uphold the integrity of our roles as public servants. By demonstrating thoughtful communication, we not only strengthen our community's trust, but also foster a positive environment for constructive dialogue and decision-making. Thank you for your attention to this matter, to together we can continue to serve our town with diligence and honor. And I think that comment is especially appropriate today in light of the recent activities that have happened, so, thank you. Do we have any items of old business?
Mr. President, I just, well, sorry. We will be having our next Preparedness Seminar on July 31st, right here at 6:30.
Thank you. Any other items of old business? Hearing none. Any items of new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one. I believe that I owe the folks sitting here an apology for a, a statement I made out of, well, I was angry, and I let it get the best of me, and I made a statement, and it reflected badly on everybody here, and I want to apologize for that. So I hope you can accept that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frederick. Any other items of new business? We have any, anybody signed up for Cindy Harris? I don't believe she's still here, is she? No. She appears to be... We do not have an executive session tonight, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Hi, I didn't sign up, and I apologize, I arrived late. Would I be able to sign up?
Yeah, you can come up, just...
Okay. Come on.
Up to the microphone, yeah.
Yeah.
State your name and where you live.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Linda Miller, and I live at 219 Hillcrest Drive in Doylestown Borough. And I'm here today, really on kind of like a fact-finding mission, I guess you could say, and just to learn about any proposed ideas for traffic mitigation with the new Target. And I also wanted to learn, as I'm someone who loves to walk to the shopping center, and I know I live in a neighborhood with children who walk, and adults as well, if there are any plans that the borough is aware of, or maybe you can send me down the right path to learn from who I need to learn from, as far as, you know, maybe a crosswalk that's got some, you know, like a speed bump. I'm particularly concerned about the Veterans Lane curve, only because traffic speeds along there quickly anyway. So that's it. That's, I'm just trying to learn some information. I'm not sure if this is the correct forum for that, or what, but you're right.
I think we can help you. We have a, we have a project that we're expecting, I believe, we're hoping to award a bid for the project at next month's meeting, to create a pedestrian-activated crosswalk on Veterans Lane, just, I guess it would be east of the curve, protected by two speed types, speed humps. So exactly what you're looking for in terms of some traffic calming, and again, a push-button pedestrian crosswalk where the current crosswalk exists on Veterans Lane.
Oh, where, for the Wesley people? Yes.
Yeah, it's something that council budgeted last year in anticipation of the opening of Target, the increase in residents in this area, the efforts that have been made to improve pedestrian accessibility and really create a nice pedestrian area in the area where we are here, with the new parks, some of the new residential developments, and some of the improvements to the shopping centers. So we're hoping to get that installed, honestly, by the, certainly by the end of the year, and award a bid actually next month.
That is really wonderful to hear. I actually am approaching it from a different area, and I know there's two people here who are in my neighborhood. We, we cross through Lantern Hill over the bridge, and then walk on Veterans that way. So the crosswalk doesn't necessarily benefit us. I was wondering if there was any thought to putting in any sort of a railing, a guardrail on that curve, or speed table? That's one area. And then my other concern is, and this may not be borough at all, it's actually in the parking lot. So when you cross, when you cross now, when you cross that parking lot, if I'm going straight as if I'm going to like Aunt Judy's, I cross, I always have to look behind me to see who's coming along on that curve, because people are coming into Planet Fitness. Again, concerned about increase in traffic in that area, so just wondering if there's any signage, or again, a, a traffic, a speed table even going into the parking lot, that's one area. And then when you make, let's say I'm walking now into the parking lot, I'm, again, I'm coming across the bridge from Lantern Hill, making that curve as a pedestrian, it's not protected at all, I'm right on that road, and even now, there's cars that go by way too quickly on that curve, they just take it too fast. But you make that left, and that is where the people come in for their online shopping pickup, so they're turning in there and parking, and there is absolutely no safety there now. And that's very concerning to me, especially, you know, it's, I know to look, and I will look, but when it's a child who's going to pick up something at the Acme for their parent, they may not necessarily be paying attention as well, or let's say it's just someone who's driving too quickly, coming into park there, I, I just have to wonder if Target is doing anything to, again, enhance the safety at those crosswalks.
Are you talking about crosswalks interior to the shopping center?
I am. That's, that's one section, and then the rip line, the fencing on Veterans is obviously not in the parking lot.
Well, the, the eastern, or the westernmost speed table would be not as far as the, not as far as the curve. Obviously, we don't put a speed table on a curve itself, the curve itself slows traffic, but there would be the advanced warning signs and the, and the paint markings would be to the...
To the east.
Just as you pass the curve. So you'll get that effect of folks seeing and anticipating the speed table as they come around the curve.
But, but I think those people are advancing straight, and again, I think it's, I think it's so fantastic that the people of Wesley and anyone coming in from the borough are being protected by that crosswalk, but that doesn't assist the people coming from Lantern Hill, the people coming from Sandy Ridge, Acres, the people coming from the Twins. So, and, and right now, the, the speeds on that curve are rather excessive now. I mean, I walk my dog on there, around there on a regular basis, and, and people go fast, they go too fast. And again, we, none of us know what is going to happen with Target. I know that I have some neighbors who are also very concerned about the traffic on Broad Street, and, and, you know, making a left into the Sandy Ridge neighborhood. No one knows what will happen, but my big concern is, has any thought been given? Are there any ideas on the table? Is there budgeting if we need to, if, if something needs to be done like that? I don't, I don't really know the process for getting something like this to actually happen. So here I am, again, just trying to put it out there.
Well, the start would have to be a speed, I mean, we do have speed data on Veterans Lane. We've never had, I don't believe, any concerns about speed at the, at the curve itself. As I said, a curve of that, of that scope would act as a natural, people do slow on a curve.
It, it does not. It does not. I've never seen a speed table there. I've been living here 23 years. I've never seen anything installed on that curve, and I may have missed it, certainly.
There's never been a speed table on that curve.
Not a speed table, a speed monitor, something to monitor it. Is that what you were saying?
We do regularly do traffic data gathering on various streets. I'm not sure the last time we looked at Veterans Lane, we can look at it again.
Pretty recent, about two years, I think, but we definitely can put those boxes up again.
Because what the data shows, it wasn't something, that particular location was not identified as something that was, where we saw the issues were a large number of pedestrians who were crossing from, from west to east, if you will, and some speeds that were picking up between Atkinson Drive and the curve, before they started to slow as people went around the curve. That was the background, the data that was used to create the plan that we have now. We've not talked about a guardrail. Again, I, that would depend on whether there are speeds that would raise that concern, and no, we really didn't. The folks in Sandy Ridge and Leonard Hill are on the shopping center side of the...
Correct.
The street, and so no, we really didn't look in great detail.
Right.
Any issues where a car might somehow...
Yes, certainly, I understand that. Again, I, I'm more concerned about, as, as a walker going around that curve and having cars coming at me, driving too fast from way down the street, and they do.
We can take a look at the data, see if it, we'll double-check exactly how fresh it is.
That would be excellent.
I, I know that one of the things we definitely will do is, once the new traffic calming is installed, we always come back and re-study and compare it to the precondition to determine exactly what, what we've accomplished, and whether we've somehow created other areas, you know, people have to slow in one area, they speed in another area. So that's something we'll definitely take a look at as well.
That's super. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and Ms. Miller, just before, I mean, I can, I'll get the copies of, of the most recent traffic studies for veterans, and I'll provide those to you, okay?
Thanks, Paul.
You're good. We'll get them to you, Paul.
Anybody else? Hearing none. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn. Two years ago this month, seven people were killed in the floods in Upper Makefield. I'd like to entertain a, a motion to adjourn in their memory.
It was last year, Jack, but I'll make that motion.
Yeah. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. LeRone. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.